I hereby announce pursuant to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act that adequate notice of this meeting has been transmitted on January 16th, 2018, by the Secretary, to the Esberry Park Press, the Independent, the Two River Times, the Township Clerk, and has been posted in the meeting room and in the entrance hall in Town Hall, all pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act.
Local, Mrs. Avrin?
Here.
Mr. Hearn?
Here.
Mr. LaPresty?
Here.
Mr. Lucarelli?
Here.
Mr. Nensick?
Yes.
Mr. Obanatopoulos?
Yes.
Mr. Pesci?
Mr. Briamonte?
Here.
Mrs. Tedesco?
Thank you all rise for the pleasure of listening to this conversation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence to honor our military and police who have been wounded or killed in action.
Item number one, schedule a special meeting to carry items number three and number four below, both of which were canceled due to snowstorms.
So I ask everyone to consider whether they were able to add an extra meeting next Wednesday to make up for the meetings that were missed, so that will be April 18th. Everyone, 7:00 PM. Any objections? Motion? Uh-uh, I'm on the motion. Make your move. All second. Ball in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number two, appointment of special counsel and planner, Marian Bucci Carter, CME Associates, to be appointed retroactively to 3/21/18.
So Marian, welcome. You're going to be our conflict planner. Okay.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Dimitri, second?
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Hearn?
Yes.
Mr. LaPresty?
Yes.
Mr. Lucarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Nensick?
Yes.
Mr. Obanatopoulos?
Yes.
Mrs. Avrin?
Yes.
And Mr. Briamonte?
Yes.
And I have a memorial orders as well tonight. Do I have a motion to approve the memorial order resolution? Okay.
I'll make a motion to memorialize the resolution.
Second?
I'll second.
Mr. Hearn?
Yes.
Mr. LaPresty?
Yes.
Mr. Lucarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Nensick?
Yes.
Mr. Obanatopoulos?
Yes.
Mrs. Avrin?
Yes.
Item number three, Luca and Antonietta Giuliani, 930 Homedale Road, block 13, lot 2.01 in the R4R zone, subdivision number 5, 658. Applicant requires variance relief to allow for the development of four single-family lots. Applicant previously granted a density variance by the zoning board.
So we're going to carry this till the end of June 20th? Yes. Motion?
Make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Hearn?
Yes.
Mr. LaPresty?
Yes.
Mr. Lucarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Nensick?
Yes.
Mr. Obanatopoulos?
Yes.
Mrs. Avrin?
Yes.
And Mr. Briamonte?
Yes.
We don't have further notice. Continue public hearing, item number four, St. Mina Kopic Orthodox Church, 132 Highway 34, block 17, lot 12, in the R40B zone, preliminary, final, major site plan number 2017-2. Applicant seeks amended preliminary files, major site plan approval, conditional use variance relief to permit an expansion of existing parking lot and construction of related site improvements on the property located in the R40B zone.
Okay, so also we need no voice note out, so we're going to carry this to June 20th?
They've been asked to carry it June 20th.
Okay. Can we have one on our calendar that will accommodate that?
Yes, I do. Do I have a motion?
We don't have further notice.
Do we have further notice? As of right now, it is...
So you're going to leave it that way?
I would suggest at this point that we will hopefully finish that application.
Do we have a motion for June 20th?
Make a motion.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Hearn?
Yes.
Mr. LaPresty?
Yes.
Mr. Lucarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Nensick?
Yes.
Mr. Obanatopoulos?
Yes.
Mrs. Avrin?
Yes.
And Mr. Briamonte?
Yes.
Madam Chairman, if I may, before you proceed, my house happened to be on the...
No, Mr. Frank, I'm sorry. You know how this works. You can't just start speaking. I'm sorry. You have to have a seat.
Well, all I want to do is be added to the notification list because I'm right on the corner.
Mr. Frank, please, you cannot just speak out of turn during a public hearing.
When do you want me to do it? The end of the night?
You can see Loretta. See Loretta after the meeting.
Yeah, I don't know that there's going to be any public portion...
No, I want it on the record.
I don't know that there's going to be any public portion tonight. Right now you're out of order, Mr. Frank. I have a question, please have a seat. Thank you.
Completeness waivers, item number five, New Jersey Natural Gas, 960 Homedale Road, block 13, lot 13, in the OL-2 zone, preliminary and final site plan number 2018-1. Applicant seeks variances to construct a proposed regulatory station, access and utility is located within the 16.51 acre site owned by Homedale Venture LLC, and improved office park and cell tower.
Good evening, Board members. Nancy Skidmore from Long Island, New Orleans, fully am here on behalf of the applicant in New Jersey Natural Gas Company. This is an application for preliminary final site plan conditional use and bulk variance approval for the installation of a regulator station at 960 Homedale Road, and that is located in the OL-2 zone of the township. As some of you might recall, I recognize a few of your faces from 2016. A similar application was filed by NJNG with the board, and it was heard in or about 2016, early 2017, concerning the site immediately to the south, which is currently occupied by a solar farm. After hearing that testimony on that matter over the course of a year, that application was denied. During the course of those hearings on the solar farm site, it was suggested by one of the board members that NJNG approached the property owner to the north of the solar farm site, which is the subject property I'm talking about tonight, to see if the proposed regulator station could be located on this site in lieu of solar farm site. It was also recommended that the station be located at a greater distance from the Homedale Road right-of-way than what was proposed for the solar farm site. In fact, NJNG has been able to obtain easements to locate the facility on the subject site in an area that is about 10 times the distance than that which was proposed for the solar farm site, and that's why we're here at 40 tonight. Here, we're proposing to construct a regulator station within approximately 40 foot by 150 foot easement area located on the lot. The station will be situated approximately 180 feet from the Homedale Road right-of-way or 200 feet from the edge of the building. The closest occupied residential home is about 455 feet from the facility. The regulator station, which is a direct utility service, is permitted as a public utility conditional use within the OL-2 zone. However, since the site is already improved with an office park and a cell tower, NJNG is seeking a D1 variance for the additional proposed principal use on the lot. We also request a fence height variance. In addition, we are seeking, to the extent the board believes these are necessary, we are seeking variances for the facility identification sign, which I will tell you is a regulatory sign required by the VPU, building setbacks, building and lot coverages and lot area, but only to the extent, again, if the board deems those variances to be necessary. I don't believe the building setbacks and the building coverage requirements apply in this case, given that we propose no buildings, but again, that's a determination to be made by the board. We're also seeking design waivers for sidewalks and curbing. So I'd like to thank you for allowing us to appear before you again this evening for purposes of completeness. You know, as a matter of housekeeping, we did prepare, mail and publish a notice to property owners in accordance with the Municipal Land use law, and an affidavit of service was supplied to Loretta Kasha last week.
Our notice is to relate the notice to the board.
Thank you. I know we are first scheduled to talk about completeness in terms of how it relates to the application, so in that regard, I just want to go over a little bit of history in this matter. We did file our application on January 2nd of this year with the board. On January 28th, the board engineer issued his first completeness review letter in which he determined that NJNG had to provide additional information as it was required by the checklist, including most notably, a survey for the entire site. He had originally only supplied a partial survey for the site, considering the area we were occupying, which is a very small area. That January completeness letter also recommended 15 of our requested checklist waivers be granted by the board in connection with the application. On February 28th, we responded to those requests from Mr. Pluses, apart from evidence related to service of public notice, which obviously was a little too early to provide at that time. And then as a result, on March 20th, Mr. Pluses issued his second completeness review letter in which he again recommended that the board grant the 15 checklist waivers that were requested by NJNG. Apart from recommending those checklist waivers to the board in his March letter, Mr. Pluses also acknowledged that the only other two items that remain to be addressed concern, one, the previously mentioned notice of the public hearing, which we wanted to appoint him to supply, and then secondarily, administrative checklist item that involves a sheet index and revision status on sheets. So yesterday, we did receive a third completeness review letter, in addition to the first two that were previously sent to us, and that review letter issued yesterday essentially reverses Mr. Pluses' prior determinations as to those recommendations for the 15 checklist waiver requests, apart from two checklist items, and it also asks for additional items now previously identified as outstanding in his March completeness review letter. Just for the record, NJNG does not agree that the very same items that were subject to originally being recommended for waiver are now somehow inappropriate for denial. We respectfully submit to the board that these items are not germane to the application, certainly not to the board's assessment of the application, and that the subject of the application has not changed since the January review letter or the March review letter. Having said that, I'm certainly not singling out Mr. Pluses for the chain of events that happened over the past three months. I imagine that he was just asked to conduct another review. I am singling it out, though, for purposes of the fact that the board is so inclined to agree with Mr. Pluses' recent determinations as it relates to checklist requirements, that tonight we in fact establish the parameters of those checklist requirements, and that we come away this evening knowing exactly what we are required to provide and what we're not required to provide, just as a matter of fairness. Tonight, I have with me Mr. Mike Antilli. He's my expert engineer from Crest Engineering. What I'd like to do, if the board permits, is have Mike go through each of the checklist issues raised by Mr. Pluses yesterday, so that we can have a back and forth as to what we really need to do and what he may not think is necessary, and obviously, subject to the determination of the board.
Can you please hold that for a second?
Sure.
So at this point, I will call Mike Antilli as my first witness in the past week's morning.
We're not in a public hearing, so probably wouldn't swear you with this, but he can just give us if you want.
I prefer it.
Okay, we'll do it. Mike, just hand it over. You swear to God, it's not possible, so help yourself. Just say your full name and creation again.
Michael B. Antilli, I'm Antilli, professional engineer, professional planner, Crest Engineering Associates, Calhoun, Georgia, subdivision site division, fore president, chief marshal, professional project manager.
Yeah, I have...
Well, you can sit down. Unless the chair or any more members need to go through your... We don't need to have you as an expert right now.
I don't think so. I was just going to say, ignore it, Mr. Antilli, and any of that.
There's only two. Oh, really? Okay. I'll say it was three from last year, but I don't understand. There's two of them. So I would pretend that we've got a blank slate here.
We're absolutely going to pretend that. Okay. Mr. Antilli, we received a letter from Mr. Pluses that reviews the checklist requirements in Homedale and made some recommendations regarding those checklist requirements, and so what I'd like to just do is just start from the first item, which I think is A5. You're going to have to bear with me, because I recognize some of this is a little dry, but I think it's probably the only way we can clarify.
So we're going to go one by one and have regular spots?
Yeah, yeah, if that's okay, that's okay.
Be April 10th letter.
I am. I'm referring to April 10th letter.
We have two. We can share.
Okay, I'm going to pull it up on my... I got it. I'll pull myself on that.
No, we can share.
Okay, Mr. Antilli, with reference to Mr. Pluses' review letter dated yesterday, the 10th, 2018, can you start with the first item, I think, is A5? And these are per Mr. Pluses' review letter. This waiver is to be granted, a recommendation of granting, but can you just go through that for the board?
Yes, and as a matter of order, I guess I'll read the checklist item, if that's okay, and then respond to it. The checklist was part of, as was mentioned, the April 10th review letter, completeness review letter, and so I'll just start on A5, which indicates pen copies of percolation and so on, volume information deserves by a representative of the board of health, location of all test holes, and not required for sewer project. My response to that is that generally, percolation tests are for projects that have individual septic systems. This site does not require sewage treatment, doesn't require sewage at all, so therefore, percolation tests, I would say, remain to a site that doesn't have that.
I'm not sure we need to focus on things that Mr. Pluses has recommended.
Yeah, we are...
He's recommending that you get a waiver for that. We're not requesting that.
That's absolutely fine. I just didn't know the direction the board was going to be taking, and rather have the information on the record.
If Mr. Pluses has recommended a waiver, then I would hope right now, unless we can tell you otherwise tonight, because something...
Okay. With that in mind, I think, well, A5, we just went through, we're going to skip A6, because I believe Mr. Pluses has also recommended a waiver in that regard, that's for a soil removal permit. The next item that I believe we need to address is item A23. Mike, could you address that?
Sure. Again, reading from the checklist, A23, environmentally sensitive land area map, also shown per Section 30-116. Environmentally sensitive land areas were part of the EIS that Crest is submitting, and within the requirements of the EIS and the ordinance is a natural resource inventory map, which we also provide. And within that map, there are a number of components that would make up what most people would consider sensitive areas, and I'll just go through them quickly, and there are none of these on the site. No steep slopes, no forested, natural heritage priority sites, no intermittent prairie streams, lakes, or other water bodies, no flood plains, no wetlands, transition areas, rural pools within 200 feet of the site, no stream corridor buffers within 200 feet of the project area, no conservation easements. The project contains just the just soil, fertile sandy loam soil, which is well-drained soil, groundwater recharge is about 1 to 7 inches per year, and there's no forested lands that are located on the project site also.
Now, this has not yet been provided. The map has not yet been provided.
The map actually was provided with the provision to the EIS and attached to the back where the appendix of the EIS, yes.
The map that it would have provided in the EIS lacks detail for us to do, check it and determine if those environmentally sensitive areas exist on a site. Because you know, the site is approximately 17 acres, there's a flood plain, wetlands areas in the back with several other uses. The ordinance requires this environmentally sensitive areas map. It should be a separate exhibit, so there'll be a check.
It was a separate exhibit. I'm not sure that...
I didn't recall seeing any slopes on there or pogo or items, seeing the limits of the wetlands.
The map essentially showed the location of a proposed work area and the fairly immediate surrounding area, and then listed the things I just mentioned, which were not on the property in that vicinity.
No, we're looking for a map that covers the entire site.
So I have a question, Rick. What about agricultural properties, even though it's not on the site, would you also include that within a certain distance?
No, this map is only for the site itself.
No, I understand.
If those agricultural properties uses on the site, yes, you could have that map.
About if it's...
But if it crosses the street, no.
It's not required by the ordinance.
We just want to check how this use, as well as the other uses, are affecting these environmentally sensitive lands on the site.
So Mr. Pluses, just so I'm clear, it's that we didn't address the entire 16 and a half acres, and it was just the area of the disturbance?
Right.
Is that what you mean?
Yes.
I mean, I'm just looking at the checklist requirement, and I actually don't see a requirement that the environmentally sensitive land areas map should apply the entire site, but if that's something you'd like us to do, we can certainly expand it. It's just that's not technically a requirement of the checklist.
I believe it is the entire site is part of the application. You're correct, only that we currently have a portion of it now, so we assess how it affects the overall site.
That determination is up to the board. I can only see what's in the checklist. The only thing I'd like to point out, and I ask for the board attorney's opinion on this, is in terms of completeness, we're absolutely provided, but in terms of completeness, the quality or sufficiency of the submission does not go to completeness. It's the mere submission. So I don't know if the board attorney has an opinion on this. We're happy to provide it. I just, I don't want it to be a completeness issue.
Yeah, but if your engineer indicated checklist is wrong, so you may have booked what you needed with the area's service, but it was not the site, which is not complete. You didn't submit the... If it was eyes of our care, you'd not submit it right now.
I understand what his request is. It's legitimate, but it doesn't say that on the checklist.
It doesn't say a lot on the checklist.
Well, I know, but that's what the municipality is bound by. But you know, I don't want to have an argument over that. I'm just more concerned with...
It's not bound by the checklist. It's a recommendation of us, and we're going to follow what we're discussing now, which is that this is a decision piece for us to...
Respectfully, you are bound by the checklist, but I understand Mr. Pluses' interpretation, but you are bound by a checklist.
It was not bound by your interpretation.
Okay, okay. I mean, I... I just want to put it on the record. I understand the board's position. Mike, item A25.
A25, and I'm reading from the checklist again. Fiscal report describing anticipated demand on musical services and other financial impact. And the response would be that in terms of the scope of this project, there's no sewer dimension, there's also no lighting, there's no garbage pickup, there's no snow plowing, those things that demand services are missing from this application, I believe. There are also no buildings, no proposed employees, or jobs being created as a result of the project. There's no residential units generating population of school age children, there's no off-street parking facilities being created, and no major roads. So for those reasons, the fiscal impact report would seem to be maybe not necessary.
The items you indicated may be correct, and we may or may not agree with you, but that seems to me to point to the fact that from a fiscal viewpoint, this would be a positive revenue generator for the pound, and I think the board needs to assess that in their review.
I have a question. Part A25, it says "in other financial impact." So what do they mean by that? Because I take it as, how does this affect real estate value in the area?
Well, I was going to bring that up, but I'd also like to see a review or a report on how this project is going to affect the neighboring real estate values.
Well, I mean, I guess we can come back to that, because there are some things that the board is going to want to see independently, which Nancy and I know we don't afford to do to them, so it's not catching on where. And one of the things that we're going to want to see is a financials impact statement generated by someone chosen by the board to determine if there's a negative impact on the surrounding homes and businesses that are in the area. So there's going to be a couple of other things that we're going to ask for, as well as part of this application.
Okay, and so you're talking about a board expert in that regard, too?
I am. So you may want to need your own expert.
Well, I certainly will.
Well, we want some, we want an expert who's going to give us environmental impact determination on the strategy of this.
Can I, can I... Essentially, but can I ask you that?
I just said environmental, but I got ahead of myself. That one's coming next.
I'm sure you're going to tell me.
Yeah, that one's coming next. This one is a fiscal and economic impact on the surrounding homes and businesses. So that's one of the experts that the board is going to want to retain on behalf of the board. Can you speak louder, please?
We can't hear you.
We can't hear you back here. Okay. Matter? Yes. Not usually accused of that, so.
The board wants to hire several experts to give the board independent advice as to aspects of the New Jersey Natural Gas application. And as a preliminary matter, I guess we're doing that support next. Those three experts are going to be an environmental engineer to tell us what environmental impacts the proposed station is going to have on the area, an economic impact, so that we can see what economic impact this may have on the surrounding homes and businesses, and a gas engineer, because New Jersey Natural Gas is making certain representations that we have no independent way to verify, because this is outside the lay expertise of any of us to determine. So we're going to be looking for those three expert opinions to help guide us in our decision making.
Yeah, but as far as A25...
I was just going to ask you that.
...should go in that category besides the expert.
Well, so... Hold on a second. So New Jersey Natural Gas can add that as part of what they want to present, as part of their application, but independently of whatever you present as part of the economic impact, the board is going to want to hire an independent individual to render such a report to us. What I thought, where I thought you were going...
Oh, me?
Was it, yeah. I thought you were going is, this, I'm assuming, Mrs. Avrin, this is not part of this completeness item, though.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, but one part, the fiscal part that I'm talking about, real estate, that would be that it says other fiscal impact. So to me, I think that that should be part of this completeness.
Excuse me, I could add a little bit of that. I think it'll make it seem as not as...
I think it'll make it seem as not as surprising.
Mary Ann, if I just, you know, Greg and Mary Ann, since we swore in the applicants, and you're, we partially swore, both of you, it also, even though it's a completeness hearing, let's swear in the record. We both raise your right hand. You swear to tell all of you. About the truth, so we got.
Yes.
Actually, thank you very much.
Is this on?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll try and be brief. Under the conditional use requirements in this application, this here, under that requirement, there are standards for approval that are listed in the ordinance. And I might as well just read them. Standards and specifications in this section have been designed with following guiding principles in mind. Maintenance of the character and quality of establishing of the zones throughout Hondo Township. Conservation of property values within the surrounding area. Protection of health and safety of residents and employees on adjacent properties. Discouragement of roadway congestion and potential traffic hazards, and consistency with the goals and objectives of the master plan. All of these details on an application as complicated as this will be necessary for the board to make their decision, and I think they are recognizing that and asking for those details.
I'm not understanding. I just don't want to confuse what you just highlighted in terms of areas for the board to explore as being standards for the public utility conditional use, because they are not. Those are, you know, those are areas that the board can consider for purposes of this application, and I understand what the board would like to do with regard to experts, and certainly, we're going to have, we would have our own in that sense. But back to the checklist, right?
So, I think the board would like to see, as part of that item, what some department just read off as part of what the ordinance requires.
Well, here, you know, here's what I'm grappling with, is that that specificity isn't an item in your checklist. We have no problem with that, but it's the timing. When you say that's a checklist item, then it becomes a completeness issue, and I can't get this.
And you're, and I agree. Whatever our professionals deem to be required for the checklist, needs to be for the checklist on this financial impact component, but if it's, if things you just referred for outside the checklist, then let's get through the checklist and go to what they want to do on the other side of this paper.
Well, this.
So, that's the question. What is part of the checklist?
It is part of, I think it is part of the checklist. That's why, it's one of the items that have to be considered. That's probably why fiscal impact is listed as a checklist item, because if an application comes before you where you would need to weigh the decision on that, then you would leave that checklist item.
The fiscal report is absolutely on the checklist. We just were discussing an environmental report on the board's behalf. We were discussing, that is part of this checklist. The one thing I will point out, and I'm just going to put it in for the record, is that it does say anticipated demand on municipal services and other financial impact. It does not define that as real estate values in the area. I will, you know, ask whoever prepares that to include that, but it doesn't say that. So, again, this just goes back to the technicality of a completeness issue, because I want to move this application along.
We're here tonight to determine exactly what we need to complete, so we, at least myself, I interpret it as, to me, real estate values in the area. So, I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it, but I do, and I think it should be one of the required items.
If it impacts the town, if it impacts the residents, it should be part of it.
Absolutely, it's understood. I'm just noting, my reservation on the record is absolutely understood.
Okay. Checklist item D3, significant existing features on site and within 200 feet of proposed development site, ponds, wet areas, flood plains, wetlands, coastal flood line, environmentally sensitive areas. This kind of ties back to A23, sensitive lands issue, which.
You're on D3?
D3.
D.
D3. And so, this ties back to the previous checklist item A23, sensitive lands. We have done a boundary survey, as Nancy mentioned. We do show significant features, including these that are listed. If they are found within the boundary of that survey, which they're not, we've been asked to provide additional environmental lands assessment tied to A23, so D3 will comply in the same way.
There's an overlap between D23 and A23, so it will supply. Again, we're looking for the wetlands, no flood plains that are on the entire site.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Ms. that, there's an overlap.
We disagree with her, with Antilli, that there's an overlap.
Okay, okay. I need.
Basically, we're being compliant, we're going to comply with A23. We're complying with the. And the next checklist item I have is location E4. Location and description of all existing proposed signs. Again, we did a survey, we do show stop signs, we do show signage that's germane to the work area in the application. If Mr. Pluses is looking for signs throughout the entire 16.51 acre site, lot 13, then we haven't done that as yet, so we can provide some additional signage in the back. I'm not sure they mean that much to the work area.
No, I'm not looking for traffic signs or regulatory signs. I'm looking for advertising signs or the sign that you indicate you want to put on the fence. Where on the fences are going? What side is it going to face?
The site plan does actually show the location of that 16-inch by 22-inch metal sign.
I couldn't find it, but if it's there, they can look.
But it's on, it is on there, and it just happens to be right where vehicles are driving to the left of the road. That's what we're applying.
You're complying with the.
Yes.
Is there a detail on it?
Yes, there is a detail. Next one is D7.
Just, sorry, just, so, Mr. Pluses, all we're looking for there, then, assuming you're okay with what we show in terms of proposed signs, is just advertising signs on the site?
Yeah, just advertising signs or, you know, signs on the office complex itself. Okay, yes, you're correct. I see the note, yeah.
And we also, we showed identification sign, location of the office complex.
Yeah, that I know.
It's on the search.
No, I was looking for the ID sign for the site.
Oh. So, E7 is the next one, and.
So, E3 is essentially, I'm sorry, E4 is complete, provided.
Correct. E7 is the next one, soilborne information, the recommendations. The soil's information is provided within the EIS. It's pre-hold soils, well-drained soils. The site, since we don't have a stormwater management facility, and we don't have sewage, as I mentioned last, those are typical reasons you would do a soil log, show the soil strata, water table, permeability rates and such. We don't have sewage, and we don't have stormwater management, so therefore, we didn't think that a soil log would be required.
Well, the requirement for the soil log is not for stormwater management here. It's to determine the soil strata and the water table, as you indicated, to see how it affects the footings and foundations of what you're proposing, whether it's to be anticipated during construction.
The structural part of this, and what Mr. Pluses said, it could be correct also. Some boards, some engineers do want to see a soil log, even though, you know, for example, basement of a house, but they just would rather see the real soil strata at that location. The other way to do it is off of an existing map, which is what we did in the EIS. And typically, we do that when there is no subsurface structure. With regard to the structural part of it, there will be a soilborne done by the desire of the foundation, the footings for the equipment. So, there will definitely be soil log done, not for what we're doing, but for the structural part. And we did do some shallow soil logs for determination of that, so.
Well, again, we're looking for at least one soil log within vicinity of the work, so that we can determine this, the water table affects any of the improvements you're proposing, or how it affects the footing, the foundations.
So, we would agree to do that. The next one I have, F8, traffic study, including analysis of parking, trip generation, location of truck routes, analysis of site distance, with all public roads is required.
You had provided us a traffic statement, which I'm willing to accept. What I'm looking for is an analysis of the driveway of the side movements, or north and south.
The reason we didn't do a more formal traffic study is simply because of the lack of frequency of trip generation for themselves.
But I think Mr. Pluses said what he's going to have without that traffic statement.
Yes, we just do a sideline study.
Sideline study.
Okay, we can do that, just responding to why we did that.
Well, we understand why you did it. I mean, even we understand why we have to do a traffic study, right? We figure, we understand it's one or two visits per year to the site, so the traffic study is called for, but it is fair for us to see exactly where this is on the site, right, and how it affects sightlines and visibility on the site, so.
Next one I have is G2. Cross-sections of details of all existing driveways or streets accompanying the site and within 250 feet. Here, we have provided on sheet 307, driveways at the front edge of the site. We do show on the survey, all circulation areas and driveways and parking areas within the site. At Hondo Road, we show the two intersections of the driveways. We also show a cross-section of Hondo Road. So, I would say we mostly comply there with respect to the area that we're working on. I don't know if there was something else we needed.
No, the cross-section for Hondo Road is fine. What we're looking for is details of the driveway itself, so that you can do the site analysis, as you were. The radiuses and angles there, that are there, were offsets.
We'll have to put the geometric information on the plan set up for the site.
So, G3 is the same thing.
H1 is drainage area map. Requesting 1.8 tributary areas on and off-site for development, and 1B areas contributing to each north and west facility. We had submitted a stormwater management waiver, due to lack of previous areas that were proposing for the site, all of them equivalent bands, which is 320 square feet, 0.04 percent of the entire 16.51 acre site. So, we didn't think that we would need drainage areas, since we're not producing any significant runoff from just.
The, I don't, I'm not looking for drainage area maps of the whole site, only for the inlets or whatever conveyance structures go from your site out to the stream. So, we want to check to make sure that everything is adequately sized. Although, yes, you're correct, they're not increasing significantly. There will be a minor increase, but there's an existing inadequate, so you would need to know.